Welcome to the Eastern School Committee meeting of Thursday, May 28th, 2020. Because of the remote meeting, you can text, send your questions in on the Q and A at the top of the screen. And Mrs. Pruitt will take care of that. All right, first up is minutes for February 28th, 2020.
Actually have a comment. I just got to pull it up. I want to make sure unless I'm missing something. Wait a minute. February 28th, you're doing right. I wasn't at that meeting, but there's four people listed as attending and all the votes are three zero.
You know what Caroline wasn't there either.
Caroline wasn't there. Okay, so that needs to be fixed.
That needs to be fixed, yes. Are there any other comments or corrections on those minutes? Good pickup there, Michelle.
Oh, I got another one. Not for this one though.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to accept the Friday, February 28th, 2020 minutes with that correction?
So moved Wiseman.
Second star.
Okay, all those in favor? Caroline? You got unmute? You have to one mute.
O'Neil, yes? Can you hear me?
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Okay. And then the second minutes are Monday, March 9th, 2020.
So I do, I need to be added as attending.
So you were there at that one?
I was at that one. That was the naming, the initial naming.
Yeah, when we sat up in the thing. That seems like a hundred years ago.
I know, right?
And it does say, and it does, seconded by Mr. Ant, so.
Yeah.
You know, I have to say though, the February 28th one says I seconded something too, so I'm going to have to check my calendar.
There was a meeting that there were only three of us there, so.
I'm pretty sure that was it, but for some reason it has me seconding one of the motions.
All right, we'll just put somebody else's name in. Any other comments or corrections on these minutes? Okay. I need a motion to accept.
So moved Durant.
Second star.
Okay, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Okay.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion and possible vote on middle school sports. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. As you can see, Bill Matthews, our athletic director is here. We had spoken about the fact that we all know we're in a tough budget time. So we were, we are committed though to bringing quality programming to our students. And so despite the fact that we are at a great loss of revenue in the state side this year, we are constantly looking at ways, even if it's cost neutral, to enhance the offering to students. We don't just say, well, sorry kids, we don't have any money. So things are status quo for you, or we're not going to continually try to update and improve upon what they are being offered. And one area that we found needed some attention was middle school sports. And so Bill Matthews and the middle school principal Luke Carroll not only came up with a plan that really enhances offerings to students, but is at a net savings overall of thousands of dollars. So he is going to review that with you this evening. And if you are interested in us moving forward, he can start working on that immediately. Part of this, I do want to remind you was in one of the many audits we have on the school side, the field hockey team that was representing the middle school was not part of the school itself. While it was a school supported club, it was not a sport. And the auditors had noted that it needed to be moved into or under the sports department. And so that is part of this. So I'm going to have Bill take over and he can answer any of your questions following the information he's providing.
Thanks, Dr. Cabral. I had sent a preliminary document to Lynn and Dr. Cabral, and I believe it went to the school committee. Did you guys receive that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just to keep things brief, I know Nancy wants to get this over by eight o'clock, so I'm going to keep it very brief. You guys had, you guys had a chance to look at that. I gave the proposal, I gave the rationale. The net expense should, with the proposal should be about $3,000 to $3,500 favorable to the budget based upon the change. And just in a quick summary for anyone who is listening in on the meeting, it would be to bring the middle school field hockey program in-house as a school sponsored sport, which is consistent with the audit. Discontinue the middle school soccer program, discontinue the seventh grade basketball program and make the middle school teams combined seventh and eighth grade teams. So we would go from four middle school basketball teams to two middle school basketball teams. We would add middle school wrestling and then we would explore the development of some other sports. Our target right now is to explore volleyball. That seems to be an area of interest and an area that would be great to complement our high school volleyball program. And it's something that we don't currently have as a youth program in the community. So those are, that's the overall proposal. And you know, the rationale, one of the main things for soccer has to do with the loss of fields. We are developing that field at Oliver Ames currently, and we lose a practice field as a result of it this fall, which then starts to displace other teams. We're ultimately a field short. So I don't have a place to put everybody this fall. We'll get that field back starting next year. But then we lose those two Parkview fields. So we're going to be down, you know, facilities when we have a tremendous need for them in the fall. That's where our heaviest crunch is. So we'll be down fields for several years here until the Parkview fields come back online. So that's just a real quick synopsis of it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Anyone?
I actually have a question about the field that's being developed. When is that anticipated to be finished? I mean, I know things are way off schedule because of COVID, but when is that expected to be done?
They're actually progressing quite nicely because they've been able to work through COVID-19 through this process. So we expect that we will seed the field this fall. Everything, if we are able to stay on schedule as we are now, we would seed it this fall. And then next spring, we would have to make a determination whether or not we can play on it next spring. That's the big question mark, but we fully anticipate using it in the fall of 2021.
Can you, can you speak a little bit about the participation numbers for basketball and soccer at the middle school? And if the coaches at the high school level had any feedback about the impact on discontinuing those or reducing basketball and discontinuing soccer?
Well, I think that on the, on the soccer side, I think that the coaches would prefer to have a middle school program if all things were equal, but did not adamantly oppose the elimination of that program or the discontinuance of that program. On basketball, the same type of thing, you know, it's nice to have those programs, but it's not a must have. So I certainly can't say that they were jumping for joy when I talked to them about it. But you know, it's one of those things that they understand and accept the reasons behind why we're doing it.
And also can you just talk about what kind of numbers you were seeing in each of those programs? And how many students might participate in competing programs?
So the participation in, in basketball to start with, we would typically fill up our teams on the girl's side. We try to take 15 kids on each one of those teams, which is about as many as you can carry. You get beyond that and you're really limiting playing time. So typically we'd fill the rosters at 15 for both boys and girls at all levels. Sometimes the girls would be a little bit short of that. Typically, the boys would have to make cuts on the, on the boy's side for those boys teams. On the soccer side, pretty strong participation on the girls. We would try to take everybody some years. We wouldn't be able to do that. Other years we would typically about 20 players, 18 to 20 players on the girls. On the boys, we had one year that we couldn't field a team. And then this last year, we decided to move forward with fielding a team and we were right on the bubble for the number of kids we need. You really need to have 12, 13, 14 kids. 12 is a little bit light. So we were looking for 14 or 15 and we had to beg kids to come out in order to get to the numbers. So the boy's side of the soccer program, we had some difficulty with that.
And was it just one team, boys and girls for the school or was, were there multiple teams for soccer?
There was one boys team and one girls team. It was combined seventh and eighth grade.
Okay. And then if I understand in the field hockey as a club, you were fielding three teams?
Correct.
And their participation is pretty strong?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Matthews?
Nancy, could, could I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
I mean, I really applaud you, Bill, and also Luke for coming up with some proposals that are not only, they're more than cost neutral, they're actually cost beneficial to us. Because I think that in the current climate and possibly for several years to come, it will be very difficult to justify adding programs of any sort, given the very significant financial challenges that we're expected to face. So I give you a lot of credit for coming up with a creative way to both save money and add programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Matthews or anybody? All right, would we like to take a vote right now on this proposal? Does anybody want to make a motion?
O'Neil, I'll make a motion to accept this proposal.
Durant, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews for coming.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Matthews, if you can hang on one second, Ms. DeLuca, if you don't mind, if you can just take out of order number five, so that since Mr. Matthews is still here, if he can answer any questions about the scoreboard. And then we can go off the remote learning survey results.
So do I need to make a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we change the order and switch item four and five.
Wiseman, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
So we're going to go to discussion and possible vote to approve scoreboard repair. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so as you know, in, in the, one of our more recent storms, we had some significant damage to the scoreboard at Moscato Stadium. And Mr. Matthews is here to discuss how we're going to move forward with the replacement of that board.
With the insurance coverage that we have, insurance will cover a good portion of the cost of the scoreboard. And that is on a replacement basis, replacement of what was there before. At that point in time, when that scoreboard was put in, the scoreboard would be considered, if you will, a football scoreboard. Like if you can recall seeing any events at the stadium, you would see down and distance, yards to go, quarters, not halves. It's a very football oriented scoreboard that was repurposed as other sports were added to include soccer, field hockey and lacrosse. The, the scoreboard that we would like to get is an upgrade from that basic scoreboard that's covered by insurance. The additional cost is in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000. And that scoreboard would be a multi-use scoreboard, which would be, if you will, customizable electronically so that you would have it, have halves for soccer. It would allow you to track penalty minutes for lacrosse, which would be huge. It's, that's really a nice advantage of the scoreboard. But ultimately you have a scoreboard that is electronically programmed for each one of the sports that is competing on the field at that time, as opposed to just having the preset down and distance and those things for football. So it would be appropriate for football, field hockey, soccer and lacrosse. We have been fortunate working with scoreboard enterprises and the relationship with Northeastern Savings Bank that they have offered to cover that incremental cost of upgrading the scoreboard to that multi-use scoreboard. So any incremental cost associated with that upgrade, they have agreed to cover in exchange for doing a sponsor sign on that scoreboard, which is a sign essentially, if you will, that was on the existing scoreboard. They did some sponsorship of the original scoreboard when it was put up. So it would be, if you will, kind of a continuation of the sponsorship of, of the scoreboard.
So that is Northeastern Savings?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question. So you said field, football, field hockey, lacrosse, soccer. What about track? Do they use a scoreboard of any kind?
They generally don't, and that's a good question, Nancy. I'm, I'm not sure if it can be programmed to really customize and fit for track. So I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head.
I was just curious, but you are going to use scoreboard enterprises, Chuck Hurley?
Yes.
Okay, and Northeastern Savings Bank is picking up this incremental amount. Okay.
Nancy, oh, I just have a question. When you say incremental.
Raise your hand. Who started? Caroline.
Sorry. When you talk about incremental costs associated with the new scoreboard, are you actually talking about the additional cost of the scoreboard or other costs that might come along with the installation of the new scoreboard? I'm a little confused.
Good question, Caroline. It is the additional cost of the scoreboard. The installation cost, from my understanding, is not, there's no difference in the installation cost.
Okay.
It would be scoreboard and it would also entail the scoring consoles that would go with it. But I think that those would be, you know, they just, the consoles that you get just match up with the scoreboard version that you purchase. But all, all of those things would be included in the sponsorship.
That's wonderful. Well, thanks, many thanks to Northeastern Savings and the scoreboard company.
Did someone else have a question?
Yeah, well, that was Caroline basically asked my question, but what about the operation? Was there any additional operational costs with the different scoreboard? No?
No. There will be, and this, this would exist whether it's the upgraded scoreboard or the current scoreboard. There is a deductible cost on our insurance. That deductible, we believe is $5,000. We are researching that further. We think worst case it's 5,000, but I do want to be clear that there is a deductible to be paid and that is unrelated to which version it is. Okay, it would be, it's the same deductible for either one of the scoreboards. So that would be our, our ultimate responsibility.
So do we have a place in the budget that we can pay this 5,000, whether it be gate receipts or?
Yes, revolving account for athletics.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So do we need to vote? Well, it's, oh, there is a vote. Okay. So do, does somebody want to make a motion on this, please?
O'Neil, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the installation of the new scoreboard with the enhancements.
Ask a question. For a second, do we have to also approve the sponsorship again, or is that just a given?
Good question.
It's part of, it's part of this vote that you are allowing them to advertise on the scoreboard.
So installation and sponsorship of?
Yeah, I think I should change the motion. You're right, Michelle. So I moved to approve the installation and sponsorship of the new scoreboard to replace the one that was damaged.
Durant, second.
All right, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Matthews, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, number four, remote learning survey results. Dr. Cabral. You're on mute. Unmute.
I know, I'm not talking yet. So we were just having a little difficulty with the slides. So Mrs. Pruitt just sent it to me to do for her. So we're going to just, we're going to tag team this a little bit.
All right, I apologize, everyone. It's, it's this Chromebook, right Caroline?
No, I have an iPad.
Well, no, I have an iPad that I purchased myself. And that's what I've been using for all my Zoom meetings. But the, the Chromebook that I have, I'm having difficulty. It's, it's very lagging. So the, I wasn't able to share my screen with my Chromebook, unfortunately.
Let me know when you want me to advance the slides.
Okay.
So. Alicia, could I just make a point? This is public information anyway. So would it make sense for you to just send it to all of us?
Yes, I can share it with you.
I mean, then it'll be a little less complicated to try to read it from the screen.
Sure, I can share it with you right now. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, it is being shared. There we go. So over the past few weeks, we have been sending out surveys to families at all grade levels to receive feedback on our remote learning plans. It's really important that we receive this feedback so that we have been able to adapt our remote learning plans according to the needs of our families. So Alicia, if you want to just change to the next slide? Please, thank you. So our district wide participation, we had 710 families. We received 100, 710 surveys back. You can see the distribution of the grade levels of the schools. We lumped PK to two into one category, although we do have the, the data for each school. However, we, we put them into one category. And you can see that most of our responses were from Richardson Olmsted, grades three through five, and then Oliver Ames, along with PK to two and Easton Middle School. So with the 710 that participated, that I just want to point out, while it sounds like a great number, it's still only about 20% of our district. So I'm hoping that maybe we can send out another survey to all families at the end to get an overall summary. Because as it was pointed out at a previous school committee meeting, that some of these surveys did go out prior to the la, the last notification from the commissioner. So Alicia, if you wouldn't mind, just switching, thank you. So the district wide summary, our survey topics basically were into three separate categories. One was student learning. The next was mental health and the wellbeing of students or students and families, and also overall feedback. And under student learning, we really broke it up into the ease of the remote learning plans, time spent on assignments, the work completion, technology access, and additional supports needed. And then under mental health, how are the students and families, how are they coping with COVID-19 and school closure? Next, please. So when we looked at the time on learning, so at the grades six through 12, we are able to, we don't necessarily need feedback on their participation or I should say work completion, because we are calculating that. That is a grade that's being provided to our students in grades six through 12. So we actually wanted to gauge the, gauge the families on how much they think the time on learning has been. How long is it taking them to complete assignments? And you'll see that at Oliver Ames, on this, on this data, on this, this grid, you can see that, you know, we are a little bit disappointed with some that are spending less than 45 minutes. And that is some data that we want to dive deeper into. I reached out to Principal Paul and he and I both felt that this, we weren't quite sure about that actual data point and how the, it was interpreted on the, on the sheet. So we will make sure that that is something we follow up on in our next survey. Next, please. Work completion for PK to five, the question was around how much of the remote learning plan is being completed each week? And you can see that most or all is basically the majority. In PK to two, we saw that there was some, was a little bit higher than we had anticipated. However, we are also understanding that at the PK to five level, our students aren't as independent and they do require more, more attention from their families, from their, from their guardians or parents. And often, a lot of the feedback had, that was shared was that parents are working from home. And so it might be harder for them to actually help their students with the work. Next, please. So we also wanted to measure our, what is the technology in the homes? We did only ask this question in grades six through 12, because PK through five, there were a lot, there were more. The Google Classroom was not necessarily our platform, so there were more assignments that didn't necessarily need technology. We did find that technology was more, was used more in grades six through 12 as an overall generalization. And what was really, oh my goodness.
Christy, I'm not sure this is the right slide.
No, it's not.
That looks like the same slide you just showed us.
Yes, okay. I, I had to copy this over. I apologize. Okay, so I have that data, so I will just, I will just share this with you. Timer, technology, hold on one second. Okay, so I actually have that data and I'll just share this with you. I will, I will adjust this spreadsheet, this, this presentation and reshare it with you. I apologize for that. But what's really interesting is when we looked at the technology, we asked parents, how many are, how many students had their own devices? How many shared their device with one person in their home? How many shared with two people in their home? And how many shared with three or more people in their home? And what was really interesting was at Oliver Ames, we had 86.9% had their own devices. And at the Easton Middle School, we had 81.5% that had their own devices. At the, for those that just shared with one person was 9.4% at Oliver Ames and 14.8% at the middle school. Those that shared with two people was 2.3% at Oliver Ames and 2.5% at the Easton Middle School. And then those that shared with three or more was 1.4% or one point at the, at Oliver Ames and 1.2% at Easton Middle School. So that data was very interesting to us because we were actually, you know, thinking about that we need more devices to share, you know, at our, at our secondary level. And but in fact, most of our students do have their own devices, which was, which was nice to see. Again, only those that responded to the survey. Next slide, please.
The lower grade, the lower grade is where we've been giving the most devices in terms of the.
Correct. Yes. So then we looked at the mental health in six through 12. And, and we asked the parents, how are the children handling the school closure? And we found that more than half of our students have adapted well. And the same, that was the same data points for Oliver Ames and EMS. We have, you know, a little over a quarter of our students are asking some questions. And you'll see that the, the data for Oliver Ames and EMS is, is pretty similar. And at the end of the survey, we asked if you wanted, if the parents wanted us to reach out to them or if they needed more support, please leave their name and number and we'll contact them. And we found that most of the people that answered, those that are having difficulty or often ask questions did actually fill that out and we were able to follow up with them, which was wonderful. And that's, you know, real kudos to our guidance department and our adjustment counselors and school psychologists and administrators that have really been, really paying, paying close, close attention to this for all of our students. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And then in PK to five, we were also, you know, happy to see that, that more than half of our students are adapting well at Richardson Olmsted. PK to two, you know, most of our students adapt well, but ask some questions. I think that's developmentally very normal. And I'm glad that they're asking questions. That, that actually was a, was a positive for me because they are talking about it in their homes, and their parents are working with them as well. And again, we, we did ask them if they're looking for more support for their children to please add their name with phone number, and we can provide that support for them, which they did do. And next slide, please. And then I pulled out some quotes that, you know, really is what is, what is going well in the, with the remote learning plans? And these were some of the common themes that we saw, that the teachers and staff are present and available. There's good communication. Many of the families actually liked the flexibility to complete the work. It wasn't during certain hours. It could be done all in, you know, one, any day of the week. It didn't have to be on a particular day. Also that they said that there were, the resources were great, and the learning, remote learning plans were clear. They, they, the common theme also was that they were getting quick responses from staff when they reached out to ask for questions. People, you know, whether it's our teachers or paraprofessionals, or, you know, anyone that they've been asking for, administrators were responding quickly. And also that the class meetings really helped motivate the students, and that we were providing Chromebooks for families. Again, Google meets with teachers and friends was something that was going really well. The Aspen Family Portal, which I know was mentioned at the previous school committee meeting, that that was a great positive, that families are able to go in and actually access on their own without having to rely on their student's account, their child's account. And then also clarity in what is expected. And they said that the amount of work was, was actually perfect. And you'll see in our next slide, that, if you want to just switch that, Alicia, thank you, that on the other side, what support is needed, people are saying that we need more work. So, you know, it's really, it's interesting because when you survey so many people, and these are the, this is the feedback that we've been getting, that a lot, a lot of people are saying the amount of work is great, but then there's a group of people saying we need more work. So it's really, we're trying to, to meet the needs of all students and create that balance. I think during this time, we have learned a lot. And if there isn't a chance that we do go back to remote learning at any time in the future, a lot of what we've learned will, will actually define what we're doing when we move forward. And you'll see what more support you need, live teaching. I mean, the, the more interaction with teachers, live teaching, that was the number one theme. And we know that the commissioner had actually shared with us his guidelines and actually suggested that we don't move to live teaching, as there are many complications, but also as we discussed in the past, and also a lot of benefits to asynchronous learning. But also the parents are saying that more work, as I shared, more continuous contact with teachers. They're asking for one-on-one sessions with teachers. Friday work be optional. I think, I think we all want that, right? Friday work optional. More communication, although on the other hand, if you look, they said communication was, was great. Having one password for everything. I know that that has been a struggle, especially in our K through five environments, that that our students have many passwords for many different platforms. And then the other theme that we saw was allow school books to go home. So this was really, I, I, if you can just forward to the next slide, I just say thank you to everyone for participating. Whenever a survey comes out like this, we actually use this data to inform how we proceed in the future. And we cannot do things better unless we hear from everyone. And so I'm hoping that when the, the survey goes out to, as we complete the year of remote, you know, with this remote learning, that we'll get more of a response because we, you know, if we do end up going back to remote learning in the future, this will definitely, this data will help provide us our guidance for the future. So that's what I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Caroline?
Unmute Caroline. Unmute Caroline. Unmute.
Okay, got it. Okay. When you say these were themes, I would actually find it helpful, being a sort of data person, at least I love data, to know kind of percentages that supported those particular themes. So for example, as you said yourself, there's almost a contradiction in saying that, you know, that more live teaching versus, you know, the, just the right amount, that type of thing. So maybe when you have a chance to review the survey more, it would be helpful to just have some percentages.
Right.
You know, themes can emerge. I don't know whether that's from three people or forty-five people or a hundred and eighty people, you know? So that would be helpful.
Yeah, I put it on if I saw it more than ten times. So that's where, you know, but, but the, as far as what is going well, I, the good communication was an abundance. But, but more communication, you know, and specifically, there was, there was a lot at the Oliver, on the Oliver Ames survey about communicating more about the seniors. And that was, that was one of the themes. But I know that after the survey was sent out, that, that piece of information went home with more specifics on what was happening with seniors. So that's where some of the data was skewed. But as far as what is going well, it was overwhelming with the teachers and staff being present and available, that the communication has been fantastic. You know, and in fact, in the, 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 the answers around what could we support you more with, there was a lot of answers that said nothing, we're doing fine. Everything's fine. So, you know, I, I should have put that on there as well. But, but you know, for more than ten people to put communication, I do think that that's an important data point for us to look at and kind of narrow in more. So is that a question in the next survey that we ask, be more specific around the communication that you'd like to receive? And, and kind of disaggregate that according to, you know, grade level and span and things like that, and try and dig down a little bit deeper.
Could I just do a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
I'm actually a little bit confused. So is there really any live teaching? I mean, you're kind of saying that the I can't even say it, teaching is, you know, what the commissioner recommends. And, I mean, I do have some concerns about that because I do recognize that probably about twenty percent of our children require additional supports. But on the other hand, if you have a full eighty percent of children who might benefit from more direct contact with teachers, teaching, you know, it's, it's a really hard balance to consider. So I, the thing I do hear from parents is that their kids are not really seeing their teachers. Maybe it's just the people who bother to, to make a statement, kind of, you know, not in an official survey, but otherwise. So is there some sort of standard that's set up in terms of, you know, you talked about class meetings, for example? Is there a requirement of a certain number of meetings, or is that entirely up to the individual teacher? I mean, how is that, you know, are there expectations that are established for all educators and then other areas where there's, you know, complete flexibility? I guess I just have a lot of questions. Sorry about this.
Yeah, so it definitely varies. For example, a student that receives services on their individualized education plan, they are receiving live teaching. And those are in small groups, or individual with their special educator and their, and their support, their support personnel, whether it's a speech and language pathologist, or their occupational or physical therapist. Those, those students are receiving that, and that is being documented. We actually, those teachers actually have to document the amount of time that they are providing those services for our students on IEPs. So that is, that is occurring. As far as a general, like, I'm thinking like a, a second grade classroom. The, the, the first thing that went out was, you know, that the, that we would have the teachers meet with the classrooms at least once a week. And that was something that the principals all followed up with to ensure that that was occurring. We're finding that many of our teachers are actually doing it more and more than just once a week. For example, one of our curriculum leaders shared with me that she was ready to do a lesson with her, with her staff. I think I've shared this before with her staff, with her students. And it turned into a show and tell. There's so many distractions that happen in a classroom, in a, in an online classroom, especially at the elementary level, that it's very difficult for them to, to, it's, it's difficult for them to, to do actual teaching. These are all things that we are absorbing, that if we go to remote learning again in the future, you know, I've already, I've already heard teachers talking about setting up classroom norms, their, their online classroom rules, and training students on, you know, how do you enter into a classroom? I've had teachers talk about, you know, do I separate the class so I have smaller groups? And do the lesson twice at two different times? You know, those are, those are the kind of things that we're all, we're all writing down and reflecting. And when we talk and gather all this information in the future, you know, that's, that's, that, those are all things that we have to consider. I did send out a survey today for staff that I'm hoping they will fill out, which, which will be great information, and I'd love to share those results with you as well. And that includes really how much time they're spending throughout the day and week, planning, doing, you know, the, the, having interaction with their students. So we'll have that concrete data from them as well to see, you know, how are they spending their day around, whether it's through professional development, answering emails from parents or students, how they are, how they're planning, how they're interacting, you know, in their interactions with students, whether it's through email or live, you know, live conferences, Google meets, things like that. So that, that data will be great to have as well. And see, you know, what, what will they need in the future? You know, are they spending their own money on things? What, what kind of things will we need to support them with? And, and also checking in to see how they're doing. Because, you know, one of the, one, as I read some of the feedback quickly, you know, we've, we've had some, a, a good number responding already. You know, one said, I'm, I'm trying to do a live session, and I have my one-year-old and four-year-old running around the background because my husband is at work. And so, you know, these are all the things that we, that we're looking to balance. And, and, you know, we know that live teaching is best. But there's lots of boundaries. Are the kids going to be accessible at given times? How do we ensure that they're available? And, and it, you know, we, we have to take that all into consideration. There'll, there'll also have to be specific guidelines for parents as well. You know, is there a time during the day? Because I know that, you know, if I had to support my own children during this, it would have been very difficult for me. And I'm lucky that they're, they're more independent. So I hope that that answers some of your questions.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, Caroline, finish if you had another.
Oh, I'm sorry, Caroline.
Well, I was just gonna mention that some of the things, Chrissy, that you, that you talked about, I think teachers do all the time, like, you know, the emailing parents, the spending their own money, which we, you know, wish were not the case at all. You know, I mean, many of those things teachers do automatically. So I'm not sure that, I mean, it's helpful to ask those questions, but I'm not sure that that informs us entirely well about the difference between, you know, regular classroom teaching in, live teaching and, you know, on remote learning. But the other thing is, some of the things, I've seen some wonderful ideas on, I mean, as you know, I spend a lot of time doing research on these things, but some districts haven't so much increased their live teaching per se, but they have increased just the kind of contact with the class. There will always be times that aren't going to be convenient for a percentage of. And that's true even in a regular, you know, and six months ago, you had kids who were out for various reasons. You know, so that there's no way that a teacher can guarantee reaching his or her own whole class at a given time. But I just, just from the feedback I've gotten, I, I feel like people just want a little more connectedness for their children with their children's teachers. These kids just love their teachers and they miss them. And there was even one in, in the Bronx, for example, this one school was really amazing. The teachers would make little videos every morning and send them of their own family, kind of just like getting ready for the day, getting ready for the school day, things like that. And it seems simple, but apparently it had just an incredibly positive effect on the kids who felt very connected to their teachers. So I, I'm just kind of trying, I mean, it's such a challenging time for everyone, and particularly for teachers. And I can't imagine getting anything done with a one-year-old and a four-year-old in the background, mind teaching a class. So, you know, I'm incredibly sympathetic with those challenges. But on the other hand, you know, I just, I want us to do everything possible to, to, sounds like a ridiculous word these days, normalize the experience for kids. So anyway, those are, that's why I'm kind of digging deeper. But thank you so much, Chrissy.
Just, I want to make sure that something's not lost in the conversation. We have plenty of teachers doing live classes. We have tons of teachers doing recordings. We have teachers that have gone to students' houses and, and brought them posters and signs and driven by and waved. And we've got tons of that going on. And I haven't seen a story yet in the media that somebody in Easton Public Schools hasn't done. We just don't have that kind of coverage. So I just want to make sure that's not lost. We're talking, what we're, what Chrissy and I are working on is calibrating the expectation of every class everywhere. That's not gonna happen in three months. It's just not. But please, let's just make sure we understand, there's plenty of that stuff going on everywhere, like tons of it. Videos on, on Twitter and concerts and all kinds of things that are happening. So I just want to make sure that we don't make it sound like when we say these things aren't in place yet, we mean institutionalized.
Correct.
There's plenty of that stuff happening everywhere.
I, and, and also, you know, the, the email thing actually came up for me because I didn't think to ask about that either. Because to me, we email all the time. That's what we do. However, my, when I received feedback from my curriculum leaders, many of them were saying the quantity of emails from parents has increased dramatically. And that was something, that's why I put that in there, in that question in there, because I wanted to see if it was, in fact, you know, taking up a lot of their time, because we do have to take that into consideration when we talk about, you know, the, the, the work that needs to be completed. I also, I just want to echo what Alicia said, though, about, about the, the, what, what is happening. I mean, our teachers are unbelievable. They, like, like she said, they're driving by, they're waving to kids just so that they can see them. But the other thing too is I have teachers actually doing lessons and teaching the parents of how to do, how to have their kids learn how to read, for example. And that is not, you know, necessarily in their job description, but they are doing it because they know the parents are asking, you know, how do I, how do I teach them how to blend consonants? How do I teach them, you know, or reinforce this? Or how do I read a story with my child? And the teachers are actually working with the parents and modeling for the parents so that the parents know what to do at home. It's, it's almost like a lot of the parents are getting crash courses on, on teaching. And it's been, it's been, really been remarkable because we never asked them to do that. And they're just doing it because that's just the type of educators we have in Easton.
Well, I, I agree. And in fact, I, I probably should have mentioned that I certainly see very positive comments from parents about teachers that have, as you've said, really gone above and beyond. And it's just, you know, beyond admirable. I think, you know, Alicia's always advising us not to make comparisons. And I think that's kind of what I might have gotten hooked into a little bit, because you have parents kind of comparing their child's experience with their child's friend's experience. And there might be a pretty significant contrast, you know, based on the, that, the two different teachers capacity really to provide, you know, the kind of experience that those parents may be expecting. So I think that it, you're, Alicia's exactly right. It's always, it's a treacherous path to start those comparisons. But parents are inclined to do that. So I guess my, as I said, kind of my central question was, do we create specific expectations? So there's some consistency. But, no, there's always going to be those incredible teachers that just come up with very creative ideas and go above and beyond. And I think that's wonderful. And I'm assuming we'll put together a list of best practices for all of our educators.
Absolutely. And also. Absolutely. And al- and also to, also to keep in mind that is, that you, when you said that the parents might be comparing what their neighbor or their friends, you know, might be having in the classroom. Two children in the same classroom with the same teacher could also be experiencing it very differently. Just because of their own learning and capabilities and their own learning style, um, and their own grit. You know, there, those are, those are very, you could have two totally different experiences even from the same teacher. So I just wanted to point that out too.
Thank you.
All said, Caroline?
Yes, thank you.
Jackie?
Um, yeah, just making sure I was unmuted. Uh, yeah, so a couple of things I've heard from parents as well is um, I, I agree. I think the responses to emails have been very quick um, and very thorough. And I, that's been wonderful. Um, I think sometimes though, when parents or the children are having trouble with a particular concept, um, it's hard to do that through email. And so I know office hours were set up in this last segment um, of the remote learning. Um, and I was just wondering, going forward, have you thought about maybe expanding them a little bit? Um, you know, they're maybe a cup, two hours a week. Um, and I think it's, sometimes it's difficult, I'm sure, if, if a teacher gets a bunch of kids on whether they're asking the same question or different questions, to be able to address all of those issues in that limited time. So I was just wondering if any thoughts been given to um, expanding those kinds of interactions between the students and the teachers?
Yes, and, and it's also important to note that our, our teachers have been adapting the hours as well. I think I shared before that some of our teachers have been, um, so I apol- I keep saying, I think I shared this before, just because I feel like I, I, I apologize if I'm repeating myself. Um, but our teachers have noticed that our students' sleep schedules have changed. Uh, you know, so many of our teachers, I had one teacher share with me that she works with her own children until one o'clock. And then she works with her, her students from one to seven at night. And so she's adjusted her day to accommodate the, the sleep schedules of her, of her students. Um, and the times that she's recognizing that they're contacting her. So again, I think that this is all data that we are taking in. I think it's important that we do know that we, we have to plan for Plan B, unfortunately. You know, we don't know what's coming. And I think that plant, having these ideas and these, these um reflections on what we've learned is, is going to be really critical as we move forward if, if we have to go to remote learning in the future. So thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Caroline?
Oh, you're on mute, Caroline.
Try to do the responsible thing and then I forget. I just want to mention, the New York Times had a really quite interesting article about this timing of education. And it essentially, the premise was, if we've learned anything from this pandemic, it's the importance of later start times for middle school and high school students. And uh, no, seriously, they very large percentage of students are actually doing better academically because they're sleeping till, you know, ten, eleven o'clock and their teachers have accommodated themselves to their, you know, teens, teen students later uh biological rhythms, and it's working out very nicely. So um, I just thought I'd mention that when you, you talked about uh this teacher who's accommodated her and, or changed her whole schedule to accommodate her students, which is great. Anyway, thanks.
I also just wanna share that I did already update the um, the presentation. So the technology in your homes has the, has the correct grid on it. I apologize.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chrissy.
Thank you.
Next, and um, by the way, to the, anybody watching, if you, uh, public comment is coming up shortly, hopefully. Um, so if you have a question that you need answered, just type it in at the top of the screen. Okay, uh, next is the vote to approve the District Student Opportunity Act. Dr. Cabral.
So the commissioner has uh delayed this a couple of times and we put a marker in for the school committee meeting right before June first, which was the most recent date, but I believe that has been delayed again. Is that correct? Mrs. Pruitt? Yeah, so that, that actually has been delayed again. So we can table this. I think he's already delayed it two times and so it's the third time. So uh, when we get the new due date, we will again set a school committee meeting right before that because it has to be accepted by school committee before we submit it. Because the budget is so in flux right now, you, just for, for anyone watching, as a reminder, the Student Opportunity Act is for us to delineate, really specify what we're going to spend the Student Opportunity Act money that we receive on. Easton is not receiving Student Opportunity Act money, but we do have to explain to them a, a lot of things that are happening in the district. Well, that's quite in flux now, as we are really modifying and, and redeveloping a lot of the way we deliver services in the, in light of some serious cuts this year. So he is uh allowing some more time for everyone to work on that. He realizes that that just can't be done right now. So we will add that to an upcoming agenda. It, maybe it will be canceled again. It really all depends on the state of the budget. But we will just continue to, to add it just in case as a placeholder, so that when it is ultimately completed, you can vote on it before we submit it to the commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, and now COVID nineteen update, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so I'm not sure that uh Mrs. Pruitt has an update for instructional, but I'll, I'll kick it over to her when I'm finished. Um, really, we are um, trying desperately to finish the school year and just now beginning to turn an eye toward whatever the fall might hold. So we did have a meeting with the commissioner this week. He has told us that they are putting together some guiding information, best they can about uh options for September. Again, I, I feel uh encouraged to say that I, I felt very validated by what he described as the possibilities going forward. He's really keeping them to, to the three possibilities that we've been talking about, which is going back to school as normal, having a hundred percent remote learning or a hybrid of that. And so he is gonna be providing guidance. However, that will not be coming to us until mid-June. I did mention to the committee, I believe, that we are looking, yes, I did, cuz Caroline volunteered. I forgot. Um, we had talked about creating a reopening and repopulation committee. And we did actually start that with the leadership team. We have the committees determined. The leadership team is signing up for what they're going to chair and um help run. And then we are going to share it out with the staff. Um, it's strictly voluntary, of course. It will, we'll be working on it through the summer. But it will include all the components for preparing for any physical learning. And also to um really fortify our remote learning that we talked about, so that we're prepared for any of the possibilities. So we are going to start working with the facilities and supply group though, because one of the things the commissioner pointed out was that supplies of any kind of PPE at a minimum are taking sixty days to come in. And so he unless I misunderstood, um ironically pointed out that we should order immediately, but then reminded us the guidance wasn't coming to us about what kinds of PPE we should purchase until mid-June. So we believe that we have some pretty substantial expertise in town between our first responders, our nursing staff, our um, facilities and DPW crews, our administrators. So we're gonna get together, uh, David Twombly actually sent an invitation today, I believe, to people that he felt would be good representatives. We're taking other volunteers, of course. I think this was an area that I think Caroline wanted to volunteer for. So we are going to be taking volunteers on um that committee first. The others, we're really gonna, we're really going to try to wrap up this year because we still are floundering with the budget. We have to close out, close out this fiscal year. We have to get through town meeting. We have to get through the end of school. We have to return a lot of supplies to kids, close down the buildings. It's, it's really an arduous task because it's all obviously very different than in the past. So we're gonna focus on closing schools and then we'll turn our attention to the rest of the committees. But we're gonna start that facilities and supply conversation, so that we can start determining even things like numbers. How many masks are we gonna need for students? How many are we gonna need for staff? Where are we going to need some plexiglass coverings? Um, what are we gonna need for spacing out furniture? Um, can we switch out our small desks in certain classrooms for the big tables and other classrooms, things like that? So we're actually gonna be, start working in that group uh relatively soon. If any of you would like to be on that, please reach out to David, because that's, that's the one that's gonna be starting in the next. Uh, actually, I think he has a tentative meeting date of next week, even uh next. I'm not sure. But just reach out to David. He'll add you to that committee. The other committees, again, will, will remind you of those, but they're not gonna be starting just yet. I don't know if Chrissy has anything to add for instruction.
No, I ju- I just wanted to, to reiterate that we did send out the survey for staff, uh, mostly for those that have created the learning, the remote learning plans and have implemented them to kind of get more of their feedback um and have them share some of their experiences. The only other thing I wanted to share is that this will be promoted in a lot of our newsletters that um, DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has partnered with Ed Navigator. And they have created Camp Kinda. It's actually called Camp Kinda, K-I-N-D-A. And it's a free at-home summer experience designed to keep kids in kindergarten through grade eight engaged while they're at home. Uh, each weekday from June first to September first, participating families will get three to four hours worth of daily activities, all connected to a weekly theme. And all you have to do is go on and register and we will have that information for you on our website as well as through um any more district communications that go home. And they actually gave us a sneak peek. And week one is History's Mysterious Week. And they have secret codes and languages, exploring ancient pyramids, the lost legends of the Mayans and more, and many other fun experiences.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Cabral or for Chrissy? I, I just have one. Um, do you, I know I keep bringing this up, but do you have, I know you saying that it's in process. But there's two weeks left. Do you have any idea about, you know, cleaning out the schools, getting things?
Oh, yeah. That's well underway. That's already, that's well underway. All the principals, I think, have communicated to all the parents already about that.
Okay.
Pretty sure they have.
Yeah, they have.
I think Richardson Olmstead started this week.
So I'm not a
Yeah, I mean, in the next couple of weeks, yeah. We received, we received, Rich, for Richardson Olmstead, we received an email this week about what the schedule is gonna be and how it's gonna work.
Yep, oh, it started with seniors. The middle school sent out their plan. And I know PK two-two's working on it, if they haven't sent it already. Yeah, they've been working really hard on that. They're doing good. And we, we had to share everything, we had to share everything with the Board of Health to make sure that it met all the, the guidelines for appropriate distancing and so forth. And we got the blessing on that. So we're moving forward.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay.
We will, of course, we'll be putting, Chrissy and I are gonna be working on end-of-year communications. Um, again, I'm just really just trying to get through the budget right now and the, and the whole RIF process. It's, it's a lot. So um, we're just trying to get through that. But as soon as we do, we're gonna be sending home communications of like a wrap-up of the year. Obviously, we don't really have a projection for the fall, but telling them that we're on top of it and communicating that what we're gonna be doing over the summer in preparation that will keep people posted and so forth. But um, we really, really have to get through the next week or two um first.
All right, well, speaking of the budget, you're up next, budget update.
Okay, and Marilyn Gordon is here, of course, if you have any questions. So I've been in communication with the town administrator. You know that we've been trying to get down to a zero percent increase from FY twenty. That, of course, incurs several cuts, because just a level service with all of our collective bargaining and contractual obligations and increases of uh goods, costs of goods, was about three point four percent of an increase. So getting down to zero, not to mention additional needs that we had uh going forward, is a, a cut of, uh, was close to a million dollars. So we have been working on that. We have had executive session where you have been providing us guidance about areas you would like us to focus on, areas you would like us to perhaps try to maintain um as best we can. And what we have done, um, Con- Connor Reed, the town administrator, has he's really trying to, in preparation for town meeting, cuz it's right around the corner, he's really trying to get us to um I think we're still in the budget for three and a half percent or something like that. We uh have been able to pare some things down. We talked about some um potential layoffs. We talked about some cost-cutting measures. We talked about some things that we were trimming. And um, we believe, I, I was working with Marilyn, and we believe we can get down to uh two percent at this point. And so we want to advise Connor that he can do that. And we have the dollar figure for that, Marilyn, if you can provide what that is exactly. Um, now, to go from two percent to zero percent reflects another uh eight hundred thousand and change. And so that is um still a lot. Uh, we actually cut, we were cutting over a million dollars, excuse me. So now we have to cut the last two percent. It's um, it's about eight hundred thou- eight hundred thirty thousand dollars or so. So we're working on that, but we have this weekend, I, I had mentioned that we um asked all of our bargaining units to report back to us by tomorrow, actually, by Friday, uh, if they were interested in offering any concessions to their contracts. And we also put out a pretty comprehensive early resignation incentive package. And they, those intentions by staff are due on the thirty-first, which is Sunday. So by next week, we should have a much better idea. I, I don't expect it to be uh eight hundred thousand dollars worth of, of concessions and savings. But it might make a difference in some, or it will definitely make a difference in the number of positions we may need to or we will need to lay off. There are definite positions that are going to be laid off, but we are waiting until next week to do that because, again, we wanna see if there are any possible other funds that we could preserve as many of those positions as possible. So we can pr- we can report out on that next week to you. Uh, it will be much more solidified and we'll have a better number for Connor. But at this point, we feel confident being able to tell him that we can get it down to two percent over FY twenty. Marilyn, do you have that exact figure?
It's forty-three, two, ten, eight, thirty-seven.
And two percent means uh, is a, if we're, our goal is zero percent, I don't know that we'll get to that. But if our goal is zero percent, that's a, another reduction of eight hundred and
Eight forty-seven, two seventy-one.
Thank you. So that's what we're continuing to work on. We don't have a vote tonight. Uh, we didn't, he had asked me for that, you know, to really try to commit to that. So he can, because he's, he's working on the budget himself and trying to get that two-point-four-million-dollar shortfall closed. And so it's very important for him to get as close to that as he can, day by day. So I, we do, Marilyn and I do feel comfortable telling him that we can get down to the two percent, to the figure we just shared. And so uh, we would like to um, tell him that the school committee has been provided with that information and agrees to that. But again, a budget vote wasn't on the agenda this evening, so it won't be an official vote. Uh, but we can, again, bring a better um figure to you next week. And starting next week, we can have a placeholder for budget discussion and potential vote each week. So that we can um be prepared to have that ready for, for the town. So if you just, even if you can provide feedback, if you are, um, if you are unanimous in your comfort level at this point with us going forward at that figure, I can share that with Connor Reed, uh, but it won't, it won't be an official vote. Which is probably better anyway, since we're gonna continue working on it. That way you're not voting on a budget every week.
Uh, comments, Michelle?
Um, I just, I'm wondering if you can offer some clarification for um, for people who are watching? How the school project in the How the school project in this budget issue are related or not related. Or in effect or don't affect each other.
Okay, that's a good question. Uh, it, it's, it's not related, they don't affect each other yet. So what I mean by that is, we happen to be in a, a, a sweet spot, if you will. This whole year, up until uh December, or up until a- at least late fall. Is the final design process, which means that the designers are literally. We, we all saw floor plans, we all saw designs. For uh an architect, those are very rudimentary designs. Uh, gives us a vision of where things are, but they are literally right now coming up with everything through to their blueprints. They have to put out every single specification for it to go to a construction bidder. I believe that's happening right after the new year in January, or late December, around there. So really. Other than user group meetings, which we've been having plenty of. User group meetings are when you have a, a particular space that's being used. For example, we just had one on playgrounds. So we had school personnel present that. Uh, have students that use the playgrounds frequently, to talk about really fine-tuning it in terms of. Even colors and um the size and um where fencing would be, where gates would be. Really, really to that level of detail, because once we put out the specifications and it's bid on, that's, that's how the school is built. So they're at a very finite level of detail right now, and. Um, those, a lot of those things determine the costs. So they're gonna get it down to the dollar. Now, we all know that the costs cannot exceed what the voters voted for. For the dead exclusion override, so it won't. At, at some point, if something starts to exceed the cost, we start to value engineer items out. We haven't had to do that yet, which is a really great sign. Uh, it could happen, things come up, and it's actually quite common that that happens in a, in a project of this scale. But as of yet, we have not had to value en- engineer anything out in the design process. Once that is completed, it will go out for bid. Now that's when potentially what's happening now could have. An effect, if you will, on that bidding process itself. So the, the. Health of the economy has a great impact on how many bids we receive and what those bids are for. So. It depends, really, on how quickly the economy bounces back. If it bounces back sometime in the summer. And a lot of jobs are taken by contractors, then that may limit what's available in the winter. For contractors, and it could drive up costs. Uh, it could, uh, we could have a lot less bids, and so it's a lot less competitive. And so that would be obviously an adverse ref- effect. If it takes a little bit longer and. People are still without work, and construction still is not as robust. Now, we know construction was just allowed to reengage. Uh, but again, it depends how quickly people get jobs and how pi- qu- quickly people are hiring construction firms to complete jobs. If it bounces back closer to the fall in the winter and people are just starting to look for work. Then that could be very advantageous for us, and we could potentially come in very low, very much below. Um, our anticipated costs. So it's, it's very hard to say right now, just pretty much like everything else. But that is probably the, or it's definitely going to be the next thing. That could, or the, the only thing so far that has an impact on us. There are some projects that are doing some mitigation right now, because they're part, they were partway through a project. And it either halted for a certain amount of time, or if it continued, they had far more expenses, and M- MSBA has been working with them to try to. To mitigate those costs in terms of um extra precautions, PPEs for construction workers. Uh, disinfection at the sites, um split schedules for workers so that you had less people in contact with one another. We haven't encountered any of that, because we're, we're not doing any of that right now. It's literally in our, our architect's hands, and we're doing all of our meetings remotely. So it has not affected us yet. The next possible time that we see it could affect us is with the bidding of the construction. And like I said, that's late December, early January, and totally dependent on the market.
Any other questions or comments? Caroline?
You're muted, Caroline.
Sorry, uh, Miss, this is for Michelle. Uh, Michelle, were you referring to the fact that some parents seem a little confused about why? There's this, you know, large amount of money that's being directed to a new school, when we're going to have. What everyone knows are going to be enormous budgetary challenges. Um, there'd seem to be a number of parents that don't seem to understand that we can't just uh. Take the money that was approved for the school project and transfer it over to operating expenses, so I was wondering if.
Sorry.
That's, that, well, both pieces, but that's definitely a piece, Caroline.
Oh, okay.
There's a misconception that we can just take money and.
Yes, it's a misconception.
Exactly right, so.
No matter how many times you try to tell people that you just cannot legally or in any other way.
Yeah.
You kind of meld those um financial. Uh, those pots of money, uh people seem to really struggle with that.
Yeah, so, so I'm sorry, yes, so the taxpayers voted specifically on a debt exclusion override, and when, if you saw. The, the warrant article, it is extremely specific of what it's used for, and once it's voted on, um you cannot use it for anything else. It's against the law, so it's, it's unlawful to use one penny of that for anything except the school building project. Uh, we can't divert any funds, any other, we just simply have no power over that, unfortunately. I don't. I'm not really sure how else to explain that, except that it's illegal.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, public comment, Chrissy, did anybody question in?
We have no questions today.
Okay, superintendent notes.
Um, I, I just wanna. I know you can't vote, but I just want to sort of dipstick and, and be sure that you're okay with us sharing that information, I mean. Obviously, this is public, a public meeting, and Mr. Reed can hear it himself, but. I wanna make sure that you're okay with us proceeding at the two percent mark and then moving forward from there.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you, thanks. Uh, so I did make a note, but now I can't find it. I think I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Assistant Superintendent Notes.
I'm all set right now.
Okay, thank you. School Committee notes, uh Caroline?
Well, I just, I mentioned earlier that I attended the Mass Association, Mass Association of School Committees. Uh, there was a uh presentation uh by the Minority Caucus of the, of MASC. And there was a specialized, there was a presentation actually by an expert in um. Essentially trauma and addressing trauma in children, and this was actually about what she called developmental trauma, but. Um, Jen can probably tell you a little bit more about the actual presentation. But one of the things that I think we've all seen in countless articles at this point. Is that there's an expectation that the mental health needs of children will go up dramatically whenever they do return to school. Um, you know, there are kids who've, who've literally lost family members. They've been in environments that were far from ideal without having the outlet of school. They've um experienced their own parents, perhaps loss of jobs or other kinds of stressors, so um. You know, of course, every single article you see says what we need is a lot more money for schools to address all of these and other challenges. And of course, this is at a time where we're gonna probably have a lot less money, but um. I do think it's something that I, I know that, Leisha, you and Chrissy totally have your eye on this challenge, and um. But I just thought I'd bring up the fact that it's. Anticipated to be a really major issue, this, this kids coming back to school with, that have been truly traumatized.
Yeah, unfortunately, Caroline, we've already, we're already seeing it.
Yeah.
Um, and we're trying to deal with it now, a- and we're trying to deal with it remotely, which of course makes it even more complex. Uh, we are confident that that is the case, uh it, it certainly is going to be a national trend, but I can confirm it's already happening in Eastern. And we are confident that that is going to be the case in September.
Okay, Michelle?
No, I was trying to find the dates. I know in the last week or week and a half, um. There's been the Tempo Awards and the Monogram Night, which are both traditionally end-of-year celebrations, Monogram Night being for sports. And Tempo being for music, and both um were honoring se- uh seniors this year. I know that Tempo is doing the underclassmen in the fall. I'm not sure about Monogram Night. What they were doing with underclassmen, but both were very nice ceremonies um done through Zoom or virtual. Um, tech venues, and um they were just really nice to recognize, to take the time to recognize the seniors and all their accomplishments.
We also had a very touching Memorial Day tribute that some. A student, a former student and teacher were participating in. Um, do you wanna describe that, Mr. Durant?
Um, Sean and Kayla had kind of brainstormed, and they wanted to um. Go around town and play taps. They had played taps together and marching band, and they're, um, they continue to do music things together. And so they went around to cemeteries, veteran um association type, um, like the VA and. Uh, not VA, the VHW, VFW. Thank you. Town Hall, um various cemeteries, monuments. Um, and they spent all day doing that, and then they culminated at three o'clock. There was a Taps Across America. And Mr. Wheeler did taps from his street and had a special memorial. It happened to be his father's um helmet and flag from the army. And Kayla and Sean went to the Civil War mem- memorial and played taps, and then they created this um like movie. Um, combination of the three of them playing, and it was just a really nice tribute to um. To the spirit of Memorial Day and um. Just memo- the. Paying tribute to them and to what their sacrifices are, and it was nice to see, um, sorry, Mr. Wheeler. Multi-generational participation in that. Um, especially that the, that Kayla and Sean took it upon themselves. They weren't asked to participate. It wasn't a school project. It was not.
Right.
They just decided.
Yeah, it was very touching, and it, and it, and it moved a lot of people. And um I just wanted to point out publicly that the Director of Veterans Affairs um actually reached out to me. And said uh just how much it meant to them, and that they were very touched and moved by, by the gesture. And that they were aware of it and were very moved by that gesture.
That's nice, thank you. I will pass that along.
Thank you. Caroline?
I just wanna tell Michelle that um I actually only found out about this. From a friend in Texas who told me about the Taps Across America, but then. Next thing I knew was on Facebook from Michelle, and it was so nice seeing uh them play, I mean, thank you for posting those. Because they just did a beautiful job. That's all I had to say, I just, it just is our, it is a global community, though.
I'm all set. Jackie? You're all set?
Yep, no, I have one thing. So I just wanted to thank the um principals and teachers for coming up with the end-of-the-year plans. Um, I think they're trying to make it as special as they can for the students to come by and say good, goodbye, and happy summer to their teachers. Um, in the best way that we can do it at this point, so I just wanted to thank them for the effort that's gone into that.
Thank you. Um, Jen?
Um, just following up on uh what Caroline mentioned about the seminar that we attended this week, um, there was. There was a lot of information. It was like an hour of rapid-fire resources and websites and books, and the, the presenter. Uh, Dr. Melissa Saden was just full of information. Um, it was kind of a little bit drinking from a fire hose, but. The, the session was recorded and will be available to school committee members, so I would, I would step through an hour of time that I would recommend. Um, the people who couldn't attend to uh, to check it out. And one thing that really. Uh, stood out for me was that she referenced a survey. Said that forty-six percent of teachers report high levels of daily stress, which is the most of any occupation and on par with ER nurses. Higher than firefighters and force responders, so um that was, and I think that's, that's a pre-COVID. Uh, stat, so uh she, she did focus, you know, not only on um. The stress and strain of students, but also uh about educators, and just really emphasized the need to make sure that we're supporting. Um, all the school staff and checking in to see, you know, how we can help. You know, support them as they return to, as they deal with this, and then return to the classroom at some point, so. This, it was really important and, and good information, so I was glad that we were able to attend. And that's it.
Thank you for attending that, um Caroline and Jen. Okay, um, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to uh enter into executive session and not to return. Uh, to discuss um strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
Nancy Caroline's hands up.
Caroline?
I, I just, I tried to email Lynn, but I haven't heard from her. I was gonna ask her to send me an- another link for the executive session, because for some reason. None of the links are working for me to get on the executive session, so I just wanted to be people, make people aware that I may not be there. But uh, sorry.
If we're having trouble again, I can start a new meeting.
Okay, thanks.
You'll, you'll find a way, Caroline.
Yeah, but if we're having trouble again, I can, I can start a new meeting like we did last time.
Okay.
Okay, and uh to re- um collective bargaining for the Eastern Educators, A B and Para Professionals. And the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Secretarial Food Service and Custodial, and that to. Uh, discuss an open meeting would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second?
Wiseman's second.
Okay, and I need a roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Hey, thank you, everybody. We'll see you next Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.